Okay, we're gonna call for order for there in the city council. And I want to ask to approve amendment agenda to add new privileges. For Orange, a new order for city is traded in and brought up and all this is tracked. For exception to by an annual request. I need a motion to approve the amendment agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
Need a motion to approve the agenda as a point. We have no agenda. Need to prove that consent agenda.
Do you approve consent agenda?
Okay, we have our other comments and just appealing to say this only.
I have something I'd like to say. I'm here tonight to represent members of this community and formally request Councilman Ryan not resign. His seat on city council effective immediately. Grand Junction citizens have collected ninety-seven signatures. Forty-seven over the fifty required to submit to the election commissioner for removal. I was asked to speak for people who signed the petition because many are afraid of retaliation. Please know that the signatures collected represent all agents and economic statuses of the city of Grand Junction. Citizens are requesting you resign your unethical behavior and lack of personal or ethical responsibility in light of your bankruptcy and small claims judgment against you since you were elected. If you do not choose to resign, the night petition and signatures will be delivered to the election commissioner first thing in the morning to legally receive the removal.
Any other comments?
There is one back when I made your commissioner agency approach. Because Brian was allowing empty houses. And the personal savings you made and your signatures on public record, they're not protected. They're sacred. On matter of security, there is a lot of them being here. Got some bottles of motorcycles and dog parts. And evidently the stoplights go this way, mean nothing. So maybe there's a stoplight going this way and people are stopping. But sitting here, you're gonna have a kid on a dog park and a kid there because they don't know. They fly right there. Motorcycles are stopping for CD, pick up your green seat, boom.
Is that on Hanger Street?
Yep, go this way on the bigger, this way I let it back on my car. I saw outside their home, a dozen every morning, a dozen every night. And I'm not talking kids driving these stoplights, these are dogs. You're already my enemy, you too. And under it, something's got to be done about that corner before there's a death of a dog. We all know when our accidents occurred because of the chairman partner come back from that. But something's got to be done. And your dog parts are children who put in problems. They go way too fast, one in the middle, two, one of the boys standing in the back took that corner. Mickey actually posted it. Had that child been standing, he could have right outside of the dog. I can be obligated for acting with a child or anything, but if our mother's ever there, she'll sit, we can call one and one. But I think of some permitting matters to take into account. Oh, I'm sorry, I had nothing to add. Down here, we talked about a audit crap, and asked what department would be on it?
Um, it's on the agenda, so we'll talk about it at that time.
Alright, if it's not a whole city audit, has a state governor, I can have a petition, I have it.
We are not currently being audited. We will talk about it when we get to the agenda.
We'll be back for petition till the bar. And I have it right here.
Anybody else? No more comment? Who votes? Vote on appointing new council member. It's a private vote. Let him be. I picked out a number of people, the council asked to approve. So it would be a tally. Nobody will move over for whom?
Michelle Hillman wins the vote with two votes out of three. Michelle Nikki Hillman.
Who's this?
She cannot make it tonight, she called us after, and then after the agenda was made, so she will not be here. She will answer her.
That's Julie Robinson, I have a she. I have a she. Are we in orders discussion with Rick?
I hope everybody does well on the stand. The help issue is a lot of people present now with complaints.
She didn't have a phone.
How's it? Okay, people. Alright, anyway, I know this, uh, this kind of thing has come up a couple of times. And originally, the idea of just, uh, had some ideas in front of the council to look at. How possible they look like we have in down the road if we had a whole bunch of people come down. Like this happened before. When? I thought, uh, it probably be a good thing to just print a clarification to that. I am will stand here and read this section real quick so everybody hears it, that, uh, they don't have a copy. There, uh, since there, uh, people now, they have asked me, uh, if there was gonna be some kind of camper policy around town transit or seasonal workers. I looked into that issue after their insurance number, because I found that it's a key to the city's benefit. That if, if this was going to be an option, the city should have some type of controls in place. The question was asked because the city has allowed this on prior page without any controls or oversight. Uh, that's one of the windows we're here. And the city did not know who was occupying the campers that were in there. This proposal is not a common Lucy, uh, document, it's just a template to start off with. To include that I had from the government of the communities. If the city decides not to have seasonal camping organs, the ordinance has written the rule that we will have to work that. Uh, they property owner has let people use property camping, do stay in and work out for the season. Uh, I have had one person ask me, that brought that to my attention. And they go, it hasn't been sent to that owner. Uh, and I have received responses to that notification. Excuse me. The ordinance has written, does not allow for this kind of property, it does not differentiate between type of property, either from residential to agriculture, to manufacturing. They all fall under the same ordinance system. On the outskirts of town, his property, he designated like space for this type of camping. Other property in town, well, it was the last time this sort of influx was experienced. But again, there are no controls, or any way to tell who's here. If the council does not wish for not policies such as this, then the ordinance is the rule and must be followed. Since the vacant lander has been set to the owner of the property that is certainly allowing this, then the next step here is to find with the city attorney to present this to the court where we will adjourn. Of municipal fines that will be served by sheriff's office or at least to have in the past. The neighbors in this area don't have any position on this matter, uh, since it is always agriculture. Agricultural, this is not, however, change the fact that it is violation of city ordinance. This set of documents is ready to be sent to owners for action, and how I would put that file together, depends on the action that the council wants to take. If the city has a policy for registering seasonal campers, we would know who these people are and how long they will be staying. As of now, two of the campers that are on that property, that have been closed up historically, there is still a lot of them. The question I made before us, if the city gonna enact some kind of controls, which is called the ordinance that's written, and those seasonal campers will give out, and that is the question. And that is why originally I brought that up to the council, because you can see down the road, so it's gonna be happening. And there are people in town that have in past, had people come stay at the property with campers. And, uh, of course, our ordinance was not allowed to that, uh, way of travel. And just one side of that, there are a lot of permits in town that, what we got, what we got, every twelve months, stuff, this is, uh, basically a point of play. City needs to work on those stat things, detractors. Makes sense for their own community, a lot of them have not. It's still legal, stood on the sidewalk for Grand Junction, by the way. Uh, and it is an ordinance violation. So, that's a firm one of the examples. Okay?
May I speak to the other? May I speak to the other, please? Since I have a chance, I ask you to make a vote.
Go ahead.
Do you want me to sit in the microphone, or?
You respond to Rick.
Yes.
Or to the council?
To the council. Can I speak to the council? Okay. Because I had asked to be on the council and then Rick was gone last month, so I had asked, okay. So Rick is referring to me, for anyone that is talking. And what I would like to ask the council, Rick is referring to one person got the left, one, me. There is a camper right around the corner of me and I stopped and talked to them. They were from Arizona, they are living in their camper. I asked them if that was their permanent home. And they said they were just there, they had been coming up from Arizona, they've been staying there.
We're the council, we are.
Okay, well, I just wanna make sure, making here, so I apologize, I don't know who, okay, I will face this way. I guess I would like to know why I was the only one that received the letter. Can I ask that question first?
If I may answer that, as far as I know, in town, staying more than two weeks in their camper, those are the only ones I have shown up.
Right around the corner from me.
I don't know that.
Okay, there's pots, if you went by my house, you had to go by that camper. There's a garden sitting right by their camper, showing when they're staying in their camper. Okay? No, right up here, whatever that is, okay? I'm gonna... Show your positions. But, the first sheet there is my property. And the letter I received indicates that the campers in my property are nuisance to my neighbors. If you can look, my neighbors consist of a hay field on one side. And I own the other side, which is my pasture. And to the back of that is Raymond's cattle pasture. There is really no neighbors, except in clarity angle, so I'm not sure what a nuisance, um, I am creating. Um, the camper, the one camper is mine, the other is my assistant's. The other two are two guests that are on my property. Um, I, it's not that I, I spent over thirty-seven thousand dollars plus to have it set up to be able to house campers. I spent twenty-five thousand dollars for a setting, and you can see a separate, 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 um, electrical. I set up for separate sewer systems and separate water. I made this investment, and now I'm being told, because Brian has an issue, that I can't invite people, I had people there, no one had an issue before, when people were staying there. When Winwell was here, but I had people handy there, it was never an issue until Brian got on the committee. And, um, I had to have him evicted off my property. So I live on acreage, I am confused why I'm even in the city limits. I'm being charged city sewer, I don't have city sewer. I'm being charged all these city amenities. The city doesn't do anything to maintain it. The county doesn't maintain it because they're not getting paid. My ditches are full of weeds. So the utility company is telling me that the council says they have to charge me sewer fees. So I guess then I'd like to ask the council...
Sewer tax, we're not paying for the tax.
But is this council going to pay for my sewer to be repaired when it's that time? I'm not using any city sewer. Why am I being charged a city sewer tax? Why is the city not maintaining my ditches? My ditches were full of thistles that were invested into my yard when I took over, again, when I evicted Brian off of my property. So I guess why am I being punished when I have almost three acres, almost four acres? I spent over thirty-five, almost thirty-five thousand dollars to set it up. As you can see there, those two campers are creating no nuisance. I drove by Brian's house and I sent the pictures to Rick. He is a complete nuisance to his neighbors, there's crap all over his yard. But yet we have a councilman sitting here wanting Rick to send letters about my property being a nuisance? I should be able to...
It has nothing to do with me, it has to do with the city ordinance.
Well, I'm here!
What are you speaking in if you can't follow the city ordinance?
Well, you are following city ordinance either because your property is a nuisance. So I'm asking for a waiver. I live on an acreage, I have no immediate neighbors, I have leased facilities. We, if you have people coming into this community, I would think that we would want to keep those people here locally. I know the people staying at my place shop at Casey's and they shop at the thirty-yard line a lot. So why would you want those people to go to other communities versus staying here locally? I'm sure the bowling alley and even your coffee shop gives benefit from those people that would be coming in next year. It was not an issue last year, for two years, we, I had pipeline or the women people at my property. Now all of a sudden, Brian's on the council, he's trying to buy my property, I evicted him on the property, and now he's making it an issue. If, this is personal, this is not the city, this is Brian's personal vendetta against me.
Do you want to bring in the notices out to you and talk to you? No, I'm not.
But you brought it to Rick, you brought it to Rick. So I am asking for a waiver, I should be able to, as a homeowner, should be able to use my property and be able to invite, if I have a given friend come and stay. I mean, I could easily have a family member come stay for more than two weeks. I mean, the fact that I can't have any control when I have almost four acres and I have no control how to use my property, this is not in Iowa, this is Grand Junction, Iowa. This is not friendly family community. I would invite each and every one of you to come onto my property. It is well maintained, there is no nuisance to any of my neighbors. I, the only neighbor I have is Raymond though. And he has given, he even says that Brian is the one that is harassing me. And that it is all because of that. And he would support me if it meant I'm coming. So if he is not having any issue, I'm not sure why I can't get it over here. It's agricultural, it's not residential, it's agricultural, it is set up already for RVs. It's not like I'm dumping sewer into a yard, I have adequate sewer, I have adequate electrical, I have adequate water. And have the ideal setup, if this in fact, we have guests coming into our community, I have the ideal area for those individuals, and if they are registered, I support that, I support them. And the guests that are at my place, they were actually supposed to be gone already. And they ended up, they're leaving sometime here in the next week. But I still wanted to come because I still want this issue resolved. Do you have any questions for me? As a council.
Okay.
Do you have questions?
No, I don't agree with you. You have to... You're on a waiver.
Yes, please.
Would you like to sue the landlord?
I said it's an appeals.
Yes, that would be my... My decision's not to go to an appeals court.
May I ask a question, please? Of the meeting of the council? There? Any other, if you want to start? Alright, um, just to be clear on my ordinances, because I couldn't understand if you're welcome over here on the floor and talk about it. Our property's not allowed to have campers on the land, or any, like, any use of that.
Our property's not allowed to have campers on the land. And they were not allowed in there. Not on your fourteen days, and down to here.
This shouldn't be an issue in general, because knowing that you guys are rich and living, it's like, it's worth around thirty thousand dollars on some of the assets, you know, it's a game. If those guys are rich, that's it. That's my story, I'm just... Now that you know that they're not supposed to have a lot of property, they're a nuisance. I have enough to make sure that I'm not including everyone. If it's a matter of you're not fixing your rent, so not just the other rent, it's not the whole? I have a certain reputation, I have it.
We're also making a motion.
I have something to say about it, she's not city ledgers, she... She isn't, okay, okay, but we sent her a letter, but we didn't send the people who were actually in city ledgers. I'm just asking.
That I don't know, that's a great question.
Okay, we're not, I mean, I'm not gonna block this break. Okay, but, you sent her a letter, it's overall, technically, pretty much gotta say less. But we have, I mean, I can't even pretty often talk to that, and I'm going to, I got time, y'all.
That's just it, right now, and I can check this out quite often, I have people that I know for a fact have been in those campers, stayed continuously. Or in weekends. I know they go in and out, I know from here and there, they do stay in and out, but I don't, I cannot say to or for them, they stay in.
We, I, I'm not even saying, but we know for a fact that there's three in town that have been permanently living, one has been permanently living for, uh, labor workers.
No, hey, this... This has, this still more subtle. Let us see a motion for a waiver for Laura Orange, what she wants to do. We can't have a general label. A waiver for her all. A waiver for her own. Rick, what do you say?
The council will do whatever the council wants to do. I think if the council has had a few times at the table, we need rules or hammers. And they will see it and knows that they have to add things to distract their brother. And if they adopt that as a seasonal thing that the city is going to do, then that will completely negate the need for the waiver to plug in.
Because if we try to change this around, that our search match will be here a month.
But not many properties are on that side of the highway. I'm unique. There's only, what, four properties there? I'm, this is a totally different scenario on that side of the highway than on this side of the highway. I don't even know why those houses are in city limits. It doesn't make sense. Nobody makes that.
What I was thinking here is if the council wants to take action, looking at the possibility of that maybe being a purpose that is something that we should look at each year to see what the people are doing and is a permanent change. That's what basically looking at that and then again, this issue was not being because they're looking at what kind of rules are they going to do and they're planning on doing. Don't allow the rule that the rules are.
But she, she's walking, having a camera set there. She's not wrong. Temporary.
And that's up to the council. I think in the whole of the round, you have to go, go there to license and license.
Well, I don't think I'm being here for that. So I think for a minute, temporary. But I'm not going to, I mean, because we want to find me, but these people have been here for two months. I'm not going to say you're going to be here another week and you've got to leave because there's people here that want you out and you don't want temporary housing for a week. Not going to do it. So if it means you're the rest of the year, be it. I mean, I'm just so, whatever your decision is, I'm going to leave this town anyway. So do what you want, but I'm not going to hold it in acreage and be required to dictate what I can and cannot do. That's ridiculous. This is not a residential property. This is an acreage, agricultural acreage.
This is not something new, Rick.
That's in. Meg, Meg, what's your lead? Acreages are using.
We're good.
Do you charge them rent?
It doesn't matter.
Do you charge them rent?
Uh, they're best.
Do you charge them?
They're best.
You charge them rent?
They're best.
You charge them rent? Okay. Basic commercial debt. That's a whole other issue.
Oh, you know everybody down there.
No.
No, that's something to think about. I think, I think, I think Laura would have to take into consideration. Figure this out. Yes, it looks nice up there. I don't know who it is, I don't know. I don't know about John Hall or whatever, you know.
He charges rent for those spots out there. Can't go in. He's outside the city limit.
Carter, sorry.
Someone have the option of removing those parcels outside the city limits. So that way the county can get paid for maintaining them since the city is now. I talked to a client guy last year and he said that that was the agreement a long time ago. The city didn't have the option to maintain them because nobody was maintaining them last year. Because at least because of COVID, they didn't have the health. And if you go up there now, the ditches, none of it is maintained. So, I mean, why is there an option of moving those into county and moving the utilities over to, um, Mid-American and not access utilities and just move it into county? So then really, I mean, out of there, the county should be getting paid to maintain those areas. And then maybe get the surface that we defer. Because nobody's maintaining that area up there. And if they were agriculture, I don't know why they were ever writing to the city limits. And then it would be a huge issue. Ray's got the houses, it's all designed for agriculture. There's fields, they're not city lots, they're not city property, I mean, parks.
I don't know which one, but I got one more piece of commentary. The way the authorities are rated for the Florida, it doesn't maintain the difference between agricultural and manufacturing or residential. It comes with the others. It's just, no, it's just a critical measure. And that's what it is. Whether you are in the city during conjunction or not, it's not a point or not a point you're getting into the debate. You can't opt out. You can't leave. You're part of the city. So you don't have to let it go. It's part of the town. Just tell you inside, they incorporate a city like this law rules. More than any part of the city limits apply.
But I'm asking that. I'm asking that, could that be considered in this process of moving that into the county?
Uh, but can we, I don't, I guess I couldn't hear everything you're saying, but you could apply it. Again, you want to guarantee it in the county. You're within the city limits. You are hard to sit through.
No, I'm saying it needs consideration.
Oh, you would have to try to somehow convince the city in grand direction to give up that argument.
Well, then you're saying then to maintain it. They should provide me with city sewer. They should provide me with city amenities and they're going to be maintaining.
And those are things where you can talk to the county council and ask for things like that. That part of the city has been like that for over a year. And they'll probably win that way for another year unless somebody asks for anything to do with it. They either are out there. Uh, it's always.
But it seems like it has.
The only one that says it doesn't always have to be that way. It can only have one.
But they want the city tax because they don't want to provide any city amenities out there or.
Seven minutes.
Well, then I'm asking. I could put a twenty-five thousand dollar sewer system in.
I think, I think we're really, we're really good at this all time. And we really need to respect about, you know, some security, cover, and everybody else's concern. And I realize if we put it, we already started one month. But there's a lot to consider and I don't know. In cities, the, if the city's charged a tax for predators, animals, you only don't know.
Who do? The judge left a campground for them, so the only town that I, that I can follow where I'm, so you could do private. System. Uh, privately owned, better than town that I've, better than town that I can follow where I'm, so you could do private. I'd be in that, be a number licensing issue. That'd be a lot of work, you can just, because council would have to license that. I'll go to the committee, we set up okay office.
I know Ray can talk to you about it. It's a great apartment. It would hopefully also be able to get some police workers next year, which would research him. So I'm sure if he was good at doing that, he would appreciate it. And then John would be delighted as well, the property, the 20,000 that they have as a large case as well.
I was kind of in favor of getting you, you, during your time, until you're using it for income. So I don't know how that's going to play into this. Deal. You're going to have to use some homework, Rick. We're going to put you on board while, while, because it's a brutal problem.
I answered your question. Is it agricultural land that I take water from the land? Could be, is the same thing she's done and started right and then fall out. Yeah, I've got. I don't know, I've got that stat that's been.
Yeah. Yeah.
Like, yeah. In agricultural land, so all these farmers, did they put in all the sewer, gold, electric, everything and charge rent for, for people to live there? Because they're bad on the land.
We're going to check it off.
When you're talking about like the city limits, if I was to do that.
We'll be happy. We're really ready. We're going to put you on board while. Rural property inspection committee report, not.
Got copies of Lynn and, not today, copies of Lynn and, what's the other word? Cooper Athens. He didn't remind you. Cooper Athens. Okay, we got copies of theirs. Gave them to someone there. I talked to Ray today. Ray, he's also in the community. Just had knee surgery this morning. He's hoping to get back up about the first or second of September. So if you know what you're doing, get back this day. And we're hoping to meet the first or second of September. So we can continue working on the property inspection reports and what to do.
So you want to skip next month's meeting and tomorrow, October agenda, or would you ask for this?
If that's something, we're going to work, we're going to, hopefully, we're going to meet first or second. At the rate, we might have to be a couple of weeks. So, I mean, as far as if you didn't figure out the date, first and second, we will meet. I'm, I'm.
Use letter.
The council has a copy of the documents that I put together. I had nobody submit anything except the library. So she isn't there, but, um, I did put a resume in there. I did one word on the city cleanup. Um, let people know that updates on the main street construction are becoming soon. Which actually are just any of that, so I have nothing to include. If you think we should have started with construction. Um, the Go Green County Fund, they get their receipts for the pool. Um, and the pool itself, I was thinking of having an end of season party. It was a bit of this, hopefully she's going to get back to me on, because we have some other issues right now. So that will come out and it will be something very fixed back.
I'd most suggest that we think possibly putting the information on, how can I rush? Is it papers that have been pulled out by anybody who's run for September? Or anybody want to run for municipal positions or? Or potentially?
Basically, that's maybe that's the main thing. Yeah, I guess.
Uh, there's something in there about.
Yes, that was Rick. Um, and he was out because he had broken through to the hospital. So, um, he's, he's been a little slow right now to everything else. That is, you know, more than. But yes, I did try to get something on it. Maybe he's sitting on the sidewalk. All right.
Rick wants to talk about. Talk, new moment, I have a lot of problems. So.
Is there any?
Yes.
I've been keeping, Gary, I made it. Uh, the current over we have has been getting convinced, they'll open this whole past gig. Cap about that from the building, but it's. Uh, it's not getting any better. To the job, last week, spent the job probably four times, or five. Uh, so I talked to Larry down there at Jesus and asked about a possibility to trade. Uh, as you can see on your sheet, it would be an upgrade for 2021, sixty-six instead. Clear what we have, it would be great. Uh, and it would be faster for one. Uh, I know it's all money, but I really think it's right to do. Because things like that, anyone that loves a mom or a break down.
Did you mention Joe without a bag or more?
I did, and they, they don't want anything to do with the bag. We would not.
I know, but you said this is a debt.
Yeah, no, this one would not even like to take back. Not even off.
But the one we got, that's a debt that's made for a bagger.
No, the way you made this out didn't happen.
That was a reason why I went in the other.
Well, that's why, that's what we think. But he doesn't, he doesn't think that's the case. Here's the exact thing to do if being set up for a bagger now.
Does this one have any kind of warranty on it?
Uh, can we offer it yet? I'm not sure. I really come with a warranty, I'm just not sure what it is.
Certainly my concern is to find a new mower with a couple of months left in the season. The market loses three, four, five ounces of warranty.
Why, why, I've been going to mission that, because I just got a lot of knowledge in this year.
These two are practical.
I'm not, never had a question. I'm all, the way I understood it was funny, but it's beautiful this year.
Do, do they have a mower with a sixty inch?
No, I can't, no. He's got two of these. I can't. And I would rather, I'd like to get there. Like to go over there.
Did you try them off?
Yeah.
You know, that's a, that's a, I'm kind of upset. I've had big challenges for twenty years. My little mower out mine goes better than that one you got.
I know that's, you know me.
I don't understand. Rick, we just don't have the money right now unless Nelson decides that one will go. I mean, we're taking on money. You know, you know, there's one. What do you have to do with the bagger?
We just, I just have to listen online to that, like.
You list, you list the mower out mine, you catch one of the traded value?
I can trade it.
He says he lists the mower out mine, because the bagger will catch any bigger trade than the traded value.
The way they need to stop, the baggers stop.
They're, they're.
The mower itself, you get a better price. Then trade. I really don't.
And I'll go talk to him. Is this Larry going up in the deal with?
Larry's one of those dollars.
You want to vote? I'm ready now. All unfair, might be on board for seventy-one hundred and eighty dollars. I got no reason to go on.
There's something, we have no money right now. Yes.
No. Melissa.
Um, and I'm going to plead your case, I don't know what you want. Can I sit because I'm immune? Thank you. I'm prepared for the, it's, it's hard. Um, one of this is that I always wanted a pet scum. So I checked with DNR and they said, yes, they're legal in Iowa. So I checked with DNR and they said, yes, they're legal in Iowa, but you can't go out wild with your tractor. So I checked and found some in Iowa, in Thornton, Iowa, that breed them specifically, they're licensed, et cetera, et cetera. The baby, has a baby, they're least stumped, so there's not the smell or any of that kind of stuff. And then you just take it to any vet and you get ribbons just like you would with a dog. Um, they don't tend to wander because they have a terrible sense of direction. So, you know, I'm looking for war, a companion inside my home and, you know, that kind of thing. They can accumulate the prey, the whole bit. I don't know what else I can tell you. I mean, I've had other wild animals, I've had foxes and I've had furry dogs and what have you. But I was looking for something that was a little more domesticated and these scums are specifically bred for pets. They're not wild ones that take it out of, you know, the wild. And it's kind of.
More hostile pets.
I have not bought it yet because I didn't want to buy it. Because if you don't approve it, then, then it would have to be destroyed. So, I wanted to make sure I could do it first before I purchased it.
Any other animal requests we can add into our? They've talked about it, they've discussed it, and they told us what they want. Based on my COVID. And I must say, the person who would done it, truthfully, I'm not sure. But either that, or not, we could just commit. Or redo their story.
That is probably the part we were going to go on.
Um, I haven't read it specifically, but I, I had it to me from Petriam? Yep, Petriam. Sorry.
You can remember the long version of it, I'm impressed. You can even remember the long version of it, I'm impressed.
Right. Um, as I say, I know there's quite a few other animals that are technically farm animals in town, like horses and goats and chickens and what have you. And I say, as far as, you know, I'm not looking for a wild animal, like a lion, a tiger, cougar, or anything like that. They're not terribly violent, you know, that kind of thing. It's, you know, it would be on a leash, just like a dog or, you know, a cat, but, you know. As I say, I know a lot of them are wild, but these are not the cases, like the foxes that are bred for coats. The fox I got was one that was bred for, you know, specifically for making fur coats. And the fur was not perfect because, like any dog, you know, the red foxes, the blue foxes got together.
What we're gonna do, so we're gonna, we have this code, here's the list. So, we're going to go over it and the property, not past, we have a field for. And they do make exceptions. And that's, I don't know if you saw it or not. But anyway, we'll give you, I can tell you about how it's gonna go because, because it's in my. Glad you're on for this draft, for that scum, it's me, you, or I. We can't tell you that until we've said no.
You can make the.
Yeah. We're like, yeah, we're like.
Melissa, that could give you its people's names, should give you a code, well, don't have the code, it could give you people a board. That had a name exception. Would kind of fall.
I understand, I, it just, I'm crippled and I'm getting more and more crippled and it'll be out as much. And so, I'm looking for something that's more of a companion.
No, I have that scum from when I was a kid that put a name decent.
Well, I, I guess I'm a little more picky because I really don't want one that is.
Yeah, you can cover a lot of scare.
I had three brothers and I know what getting a piece of something like.
No, they've been very wrong. He didn't guess it.
Hey, you're at, let's make sure all the things made here on that through line they placed on that thing. They have been coming back in the garage and seats, correct?
They? And they usually do, I suppose they are, they are able to see it, where they are.
Okay, you guys go ahead and shut the brick back in the driveway?
No, as you remember, I just went through the minutes. Where, so, you and I, yeah. Discuss, Kenny Gussman, discuss the finding that infected in the driveway, specify the brick to be moved. The poke bags, when work was done. The email there discussed that there was no time frame for the project, but his plan was to visit my chef, and I personally asked. Does you remember where it was there? And Rick says, you're correctly put back, even if he's gotta come down there and do it himself, or I'll bring it now.
But I take you listening, I'll tell you. What am I, I could.
But we also discussed, as you remember, from the seventeenth place to live. Now, before you do the lectures, you know what will happen, can you?
I know, but I'm pretty good, I love it now the time, bro.
Yeah, so.
So, but I'm pretty good. I told him he could come back and tell me anything to do.
This still, this still be, you know.
That's fine. Okay.
I know you're doing a little concerned about it. And if we had the rain slows down, I didn't expect the mother to get pinned in my head for so long.
That's all, I don't, I just know my idol, when they come through to that, I will have to use the hat to be put back like it was before the air. That's why maybe the search that looks driveway back, to my property doesn't look like a big old white wall down there.
And you, and you, and that white wall needs to be on there to get that level of, get it back out. Basically, it's ripped, so.
Yeah, the fact is, it happened to kill the burger top.
Yeah.
That's fine.
You'll get it.
Okay, I'll make sure I'll say it.
I thought we, you know, we discussed that, that's fine when we're here.
That's fine, well, that's up for a while.
We'll, we'll give it a workout, can you?
That's fine.
Why don't you do that, you'll make a little brother, Andy. Okay. Yeah, all correct.
Okay, so, when I went to Franny, um, a city gets audited every eight years if they don't get picked by the pool on the interim. So every year, we pay like a two hundred dollar fee to be in a pool. And if we get picked, we get picked, if not, then it's every eight years. Our last audit was actually through the end of this till the year twenty fourteen. Um, the audit was actually twenty fifteen, but it only went through twenty fourteen, which means we get picked by the pool this year, we're getting audited. If not, we're definitely getting audited next year because that's eight years. So, obviously, in my classes, they told us how to correct for an audit, um, how to organize your files, how to make it easy for your auditor, because they always like you more when you do that. And it's easy to find. Um, and in looking at the closet in that office, nothing is organized. Nothing would be easy for an auditor to go through at all. So, what I'm asking for is if I can get about twenty hours of room for Angie Jones to come in with me over a weekend and actually organize all the files for the audit. Um, because obviously, if anybody wants to see that closet on the order page, oh, you're good. I think an auditor would just look at us and laugh when he liked to have a call, even if he hadn't. Because it's insane. So, I'm asking, Angie, you sort of fill in, obviously, when I've gone, I need extra help. But this is asking for a little more than a couple of hours, and we're asking for about twenty, twelve hours for us to fill in and work on the audit where it's actually easy for an auditor.
Twenty hours each?
What I would do is just for my night and threes that week, so that my other ten hours of full time would be over immediately, and then we could just do whatever we need. So I would not be a whole amount of.
And that's a mess from the small, and all of that through a long time. From what's. You know, there.
Yes. So, she carried? Angie, you want to add it together on what's gonna be for your website?
Could you carry, ask the question? Do you understand that all city files are non-essential, often?
Prior years, yes, which is how they rotate, I mean, that's, that's normal to do that, but it's really not any of the order is the problem.
You wrote a grant for DNR trees?
Brett, you want to take that with you too? Here, here, okay. So, I received a mail from the DNR, um, the reserve will let me get it, and I'm not just automatically applying for it. Is this specific, you get a certain number of trees, this replaces trees that you've had on the roof because they were damaged by the ratio. Um, I talked to Brett, he wasn't really sure that we wanted to do that because there is a landing for not having trees in that much. Um, but I, obviously, the information is there, you're packing on the grant.
Except the dollars, the dollar match.
It is a dollar, dollar for match, correct?
They want it. That'd be definitely three to four.
Well, and that's what I wondered, Brett said he thought maybe the lines had done something, but he wasn't sure. So that's why I just wanted to bring it up and see if you guys wanted to do that, or if that kind of argument taking care of. Correct. And there are certain places that they can be, according to the grant, there are certain places for trees to be planted. That. And obviously, that can be. Me too. The applications are due August twentieth. So, if you guys want to take one, but then this creep isn't been outside, we can do that, but Brett said he didn't think it would be a good thing, not that it would be a good thing to do, but he didn't think it was needed. But I would present it because I wasn't really sure how many trees we actually got. All thanks. Next one's me too. Um, system for work management is up for renewal. There are three options, um, for everyone who doesn't, who isn't aware, the systems for work management is, if we're not in a work of it, we can't get grades. So, our options are renewal for one year at four ninety-nine, two years at seven ninety-nine, or three years for nine ninety-nine. Um, in the past, we have done the two years of seven ninety-nine. So I just need to know which option you would like.
Move back to the years again.
Just one second. What's your carry? Two years for seven ninety-nine. We need the two years, sir.
Waste water. Oh, not the feet.
Unfortunately, this is me as well. So, I look up, very, that's the application, Brett, that David Ian Pan, we filled out over the wastewater, et cetera. Um, this is actually now permit for our wastewater. So it kind of goes hand in hand, however, it's not something I normally pay, therefore, obviously, everything is the same.
Okay. We're talking about the time. And so, going through the junkyard, went through four lines. Everything you can think of, it's all in their approach. We just ring it up and they don't even come, they don't even answer one call. They wait for your cut. I talk to that person. Look, they found the whole time. And they called me, I'm not in love with this. Made a dream that one time, exactly the same grade, exactly. It's completely filled with sand and trees, because it's not the same time. He said, you want me to blow it out, suck the dirt out, and keep it going? I said, when you blow it out and suck the dirt out, I'm gonna have to tie it in. He said, well, I hope you'll save that. Also, I made a, married mayor, old decision, of moving from a ten inch tile to a twelve inch tile. And that happens to be what's in there, that matches that. Uh, so, we, I think, well, we know that they're being increased because price of fuel went up, which becomes the plastic price of the tile. It's one point three percent. So, I have no idea what this bill is gonna be because of all the barriers, and so, what's happening? But, but yet, I've done, there's part of that chicken, the last meal, cut behind the time. The lagoon needs mowing real bad. Drunk stuff up, it's a handle, I think. The fence, you know, I've been putting in, I haven't put it in yet, I have the corner. Got these, other than that, I don't know where we're at. Rick, do you know on the DNR or to where or?
We have, I brought you back from the interior, we're, that's exactly the cost, we mentioned that, we're waiting for them. Uh, I've been calling for a couple of weeks, so I have.
No, no.
And it's on others.
Uh, also, the these properties that are useless, like Kirk, West End Town, the old Grove Office, they need to be declared useless because the taxes aren't being, I mean, I'm not prepared to seriously does them, otherwise it'd start with no tax. So that, they need to be declared. I think what I'm gonna do is put a public useless deal on there. You've talked about turning on.
That's your possible, put a flag, we'll take it. Make sure the county, the load likely cap does, because, and everybody's back, and that's a kind of useless, uh, acts, and, and, I learned today, like, the riders can take me confusion, we talked about that, and, um, it's a problem.
I guess that's all, I can't, I can't say anything. Open the doors, Brett?
I got nothing.
I want to talk to you about, and let's talk about up here, you discussing this better system, now, now, what we come up with, we've got to visit, we've got to visit with this guy.
Working on.
Because we, but I want to be there, because I got that contract, and it's got to go to that money, has to go to that company, specified for what they did, and where for one round first.
It has to be completed by December 31st.
So we're gonna have to work with that company that's won that bid to either get, if it's some guy, if they can't do that, or we want done, under peace.
They claim they can.
They can't?
That's what they told me.
Because if they can't, of course, it's going to need more money, of course. But that money has to be, it's the product to us for the 29th. Has to be spent by the staff. And if they can't do it, then they can suffer that, that, that extra expense, of course, because we don't know who's going to have this problem.
Right.
Brett, there is an option to file an extension by December 1st of the use of the funds, so if that comes to that, you might be able to file that extension statement to fix the underlying prior to you to find on my covers.
Okay.
So that might be an option as well. We don't lose the grant that way.
But this company that still do that, they can't have talked to, they never even came to look.
I know they didn't. That's why I know we're not, they didn't go the app, I'm saying, that's what.
We need to get somebody there to just move it.
I'm trying, I've talked to a few times.
Tell my mayor, they're gonna get on pretty quick, and they're gonna lose everything. And that's got to be done.
I know it.
And we lose 99,000. Anything else I'm hoping for?
A few monies from CRC, which is the last step before we get it, so. That's just, that's just for the, uh, debris, which is the big one.
How are we going to handle this brush now? We've got a problem, that's brush out there we did before.
No.
Is five department going to help us on this deal?
I worry about it.
You don't have to have somebody set that, we need. Rick?
Okay, like I said, I've been going a little bit, so we have a lot on this report, but there are things that I have been working on some, and that's someone I was able to stop over, uh, the Great Canadian Foundation, of course, is one of the, uh, entities that's out there that I put on the last report, that I presented, NACRO is another organization, does larger projects, and of course, they have somebody, and I put this in the last , uh, report, that, um, big charity, who's been hired, that's made to help small youth communities, get some of this money, and tell, please, go ahead and apply, uh, put things in, uh, for, see, explain some of the rules, and a lot of you have rented this, and thought a lot of people know about these people. And would you put in for the Great Canadian Foundation, um, uh, they said, okay, I'm being, so we need, let's, I mean, it's 38%, if you can take the back report yourself, we need input, uh, the things that were brought up at the beginning, where, uh, it's a situation with the R and B bikes that started the city around New Street, we need about 160 more of them in the rest of the city, we have to deal with all New Street signs, which Brett raised about, uh, a lot of people, parking lots, there's a community center, they send their offer to be a betterment, things, uh, I guess Rick could put in, for this should allow, it's not allowed by New Street, no, you can't, I still thought, thank you, should be grateful. Uh, can everybody hear this, I want to try to speak out. Anyway, uh, other things that came to mind, would, please, bring these ideas forward, because asking, I'm putting in these applications, wasn't made out, we can just keep adding things to it. Uh, sidewalks, just for example, curves, uh, light poles, uh, heat, and then I took out their heat input. What else will the city need, if you're thinking about that?
I don't think they did all that mess.
Huh?
I'm not even going to the cops, it's totally not a story.
Well, that's something that the city's gonna have to take up, that's what we're gonna do next. Uh, and that's gonna be, uh, how we, uh, go about it. Right now, I told my private person, last night, there's been investigations of why it's been cleaned up, we don't know if that's ever ready, and until that's it, we don't know what's it. So we're kind of waiting on the next one, computer off, uh, get that. Uh, also, in my, which I didn't aim to be experienced, but it is, uh, I do have to call in to contractors about those new project that get us compliant, and I will follow up on that more this week, as I handled, said, uh, also, we're gonna complete and comprehensive overall and breakdown of what it would take to replace water lines, hydrants, stop boxes, isolation valves, pumps, but water system, very, very. I've got a lot of this already, it's implemented for motor, for, because I did it three other places, it's packed, it already loaded, and all I need to do is break it up, and then you break it up into how do you say it, and I've never said, you own these projects all once, and never get the money, always had to do it second, some eights, quarters, whatever you were getting. So, and that we, uh, once I bring that forward, and everybody decides, yeah, this is the second, when you look at, that if we get money for that, figure second, if we just fund it, that's the way it goes. And we started placing some of the outdated old hydrants, now, we're not able to isolate the city very well, different sections, loop, uh, there's a lot of inventory that goes into, uh, the high wall, maybe what the city should have compared to what it's got, and so we're, uh, that's very, I haven't said that more than. And then also, uh, and I put this in the last one too, John's not here, so if you'd be here to speak on that a little bit more, how, our, uh, was to make the order, and on, do somebody that it's, nothing's happened, we go through the process, done all the paperwork, then he has a, there's a lot of that, he takes two boards, gets a judge ruling, but if you do that, at that point, the judge sets the means of fine, or not that fine would be, and of course, to comply, you may not, may or may not get paid, it doesn't go on taxes, all the way down line. We have a property in that process right now, uh, I do not know where it's at, for when he's got time, when they have time, how it would just go, but after he's gonna get to do it, but that's where it's at right now, and any of those who go that, they're gonna run into the same obstacle. So, but anyway, we're recording that process at this point. And I guess that's all I have for my report.
One more.
All I have, this is what I did in the package. Here. You want to just tell the people?
Well, we did, we did grant from, uh, State Park, LA, with State Library, got a mid printer, getting 52 drops side, um, missing something, what else did I write down?
We got the summer reading program.
Huh?
We got the summer reading program.
Yeah.
Sorry, I'm keeping cheating.
Yeah, we got, they're doing, yeah. That was fun watching this.
It's on display.
Uh, we got, we got a nice, anything matters, we doesn't have this year, uh, new reports for the high cap grant, and, and we have a new fire, we gave them.
Can I make a note on that, we're supposed to interrupt?
Yeah.
We actually got our writing out, check today's.
Oh, awesome.
So that part of it.
Uh, one thing I'm interested in with my report was the 28 acres, I have a section to save, they manage fire, so I'm probably working on writing that through one of those. But not until I get.
I got, wait a minute, I got one thing to throw out to you guys, that was the city park on Elizabeth Street, there are so many stop signs, that's almost embarrassing, you can eliminate two of, if you're coming from the west, going east, leave the west stop sign, take down the east stop sign, go the other way, leave that stop sign, but leave a little bit of thrust on the left. We can take it down to the right, as, as, as just suggested.
I have a suggestion on that area, because they fly down, they fly down, they don't have, they're 30, 40 miles an hour, I'm sitting on the left street, watching my kid play, he something, they fly in there, they come from highway, they fly down.
I'm like, I'm surprised.
So maybe you do one of the stop signs, so they're going east and west, it'll be a stop.
I'm surprised if somebody had a call, got a person, sitting in the sheriff's department, sit down by the cemetery and watch that street, somehow in a row, that was the only slip that I've seen.
So I think.
Hundreds of times, that's true, so somebody's part of complaining to them, and they're not trying to do their job.
I get that.
What do you do?
Well, I don't want you moving the side east and west, if you want to, the people from north and south, because I feel like there's a lot, you gotta, you cannot believe how that go, and, and the, 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 fly down that street, up Elizabeth Street, up, up 12, up 13, and they come around, and they come down 16, and fly down by the cemetery, and come down Elizabeth.
Okay.
They're there, you gotta see them, and it's a wonder, and I think one of the kids almost fly out of there, so, so.
Somebody needs to. Barry, why do they all put their, why are they all there?
North, city park, yeah, but.
Right, but down there, quiet, stop signs, it's a park.
Yeah, why do you have to, there, probably.
Uh, we don't know why we're walking down there, we solve it, because at that time, the park was well used. It was well used, it was playing graphic with it there.
Are we gonna get a playground?
Uh, we're, 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 we're gonna have our focus, because we're gonna.
Actually, I have a question for you, Jerry. Don't you have to have a driver's license to drive a golf cart? So if you have underage people on a golf cart, that is actually illegal, correct?
Correct.
Is it good for the environment?
Yes.
Say I don't know.
We're gonna brand.
Look up the. All right, I'm sorry, it's me, and you guys, I have a, two for the change, because we don't think that's. But now, it's about 3:00. Now, I'm.